Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to bring to order the Halifax Board Meeting Tuesday, May 28th, 2019. All members present. First thing I'd like to do is to welcome aboard Mr. Gordon Andrews as a new member of my board. And hopefully we will work well together. Secondly, I'd like to all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And also should make you aware that Area 58 is taping this meeting. It can be seen on the local channels, I think it's what, 14 and 15?
And also on YouTube.
And also YouTube. Okay. Any changes on the agenda, any additions or deletions?
Not from me.
Where do you want to take a shot at reading off the bills?
Okay, so, yep. I move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. School warrant number 99 for $529,918.30. Venda warrant number 100 for $282,567.55. Payroll warrant number 101 for $378,654.2. Venda warrant number 102 for $283,945.16. Withholding warrant number 103 for $139,746.69. Venda warrant number 104, $56,592.12. Ambulance commitment from April 29th to May 5th, 2019 for $61,436.11. Ambulance commitment from May 6th to May 12th, 2019 for $32,554.90.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I was elected my start of the meeting. We need to do a reforming of the board members tonight, and I expected to do that. Is there a nomination for Chair?
Nominate Troy Garen for Chair, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I nominate Tom Millian as Vice Chair.
Second.
Any further combinations? All in favor?
Aye.
And Gordon Andrews as Clerk?
Second.
For the Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting you, Gordon. We just wanted to make that formal.
Okay, and then, next is this one. I move to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 105 for $376,636.91. And vendor warrant number 107 for $54,062.18.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, and then, now you're going to go find the selectmen's bills.
Yeah, so the bill goes right here. You just say what they're for and the amount.
So, I move to approve the payment of selectmen bills dated May 28th, 2019. Selectmen expense account, $107.80 to WB Nation.
Yep.
Express newspapers for $32.50. National Grid and NG Resources for $1,023.40.
And that's it.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Charles?
Going through the mail, first on the website. Susan and I have been working with Civic Plus on the new design. I just want the Board, I made copies of what the homepage would look like. Note that what I gave you is the design. It doesn't mean that those six buttons, for instance, are those topics, or the four tabs are those. It's just simply the design. We're ready to, in essence, go to press or the equivalent. Not when I'm running up, the new website won't be up and running immediately, but in terms of the homepage design, we're ready to go unless the Board says otherwise. The family, there's going to be, some of these are going to be reminders. There's a Family Day that Generations is having over at the Senior Center on June 15th that the Board's invited to. Bottle Drive for the Boy Scouts, they would like to have the next one on July 13th here at Town Hall. We've had them run that event periodically. We value problems and recommend that the Board give permission.
Is there a vote? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a request from Steve Hayward as Highway Surveyor for a line transfer of $9,000 from the Snow and Ice account to Article 30 of Annual Town Meeting of 2018, which was for the three garage doors. He ended up with a cost overrun due to engineering, and so he's asking for $9,000. Obviously, we did not have a big winter, so there's money still in the, $16,000 still in the account for snow and ice, so there's sufficient money to move over. This would need to be approved by the Board and by the Finance Committee, but since the Finance Committee's not meeting this week as the holiday, I'd submit this to them next week.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On Twin Lakes Liquors, we have a note from Francis Murphy. He has temporarily closed the store right now because of some medical issues and family issues. He does have a store, is currently under agreement with a buyer. The Board, there's no action necessary for the Board to take. We did get a note from, Joel Richmond of Commonwealth Visit.
He's here, he's awesome.
Citing Chapter 138, Section 77, that the Board could, after hearing a reasonable opportunity thereof, cancel the license if the license ceases to conduct a licensed business. I don't think there's a need for doing anything like that immediately, in that I think we should be giving Mr. Murphy a reasonable opportunity to go through the sale and transfer of the license. Obviously, if the Board wanted to at some future time, it could bring this back up for review, but I think at this point that Mr. Murphy should be given some time to get the affairs in order for the transfer. But if the Board felt otherwise, it could do that.
Well, I agree. We're not, we normally don't do anything with licenses unless someone has factored violation until December, so we should at least give them at least a couple of months to see what happens with the sale, transfer, because it's a lot easier to transfer than it is to apply for a new liquor license and go through it.
Yeah, I'm of the same opinion. I don't see a need to rush to this.
Gordon?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
There's no action, the Board's going to take.
No action at this time.
Mon Ponce Pond, we heard from Natural Heritage that they want a muscle survey done of East Mon Ponce Pond. This is similar to the muscle survey that was done for West Mon Ponce Pond, and then the monitoring program in previous years, because we have endangered species there on Ponce Pond. That's going to delay any algae remediation work over in East Mon Ponce Pond. Should delay getting the work on West Mon Ponce done this June. Given that we'd have to have the survey done, and the report we have to be generated, have to go to Natural Heritage, they generally don't do a very quick turnaround time, so I'm not sure if we're going to get the work done over in East Mon Ponce Pond this summer.
Not this year, because I think we went through this before. If the weather is too warm, algae starts to bloom early.
Right.
And the remediation doesn't do any good for it.
So the cost is $10,670 for the muscle survey, but we have money available between the Department of Public Health and Section 319 funds, so we'll be able to pay for this. But as I mentioned, we'll still have sufficient money to do West Mon Ponce Pond, so those things are going to move forward.
Can I ask you a question? What is the typical timeframe for the treatments?
Usually, early June or into May, the treatment, before the bloom, before the hot weather comes on, and the bloom goes in, it's more effective if it's done early. If it's done late, bloom's already started, sort of like having tantalize in the yard, you can spray it, but it gets.
It's too late.
Yeah.
It needs to be a pre-emerge.
On the school project, we're down.
Sorry, did I ask you a question, Gordon?
Yeah. On the school project, we're down to, I think, a very short punch list based on correspondence from the architect and from the construction firm for the doors, windows, siding. I believe it was supposed to be done last week. I need to check back with, it's got a bank dropped over at Habib Associates, in fact, if everything's now checked off. On the fire suppression system, as far as I know, I've not seen any correspondence, isn't on schedule in the sense that the day after, so June 13th, I believe, is the last day of school. Day after that, I know the janitorial crew and staff from our building department are going to be working, getting all the furniture moved and everything else to get it prepped for the folks that come in the following week.
Do we have any assurances at all that this is going to be done for the next year of school year?
Well, the contract does have a penalty clause, so that's our best assurance.
On that meeting, there will be no meeting this week, but then next week, there'll be a walk-through of the school at 3:00 p.m.
So I think there'll be June 6th, I think, then? If you have the right date.
Well, the first is Saturday, so.
Okay. So whatever that Wednesday, is it?
It was supposed to be a Wednesday, and it was going to be 3:00 p.m. after the kids were out of school.
June 5th, maybe. Okay. Great, thanks, Gordon. So we get the sprinkler project.
Well, we have a hearing at 7:40 for continuation and revocation hearing.
So we're at 7:40. This is for Davis Automotive. We've done this now for, actually, it's been running for more than a year, because they've slowly been making inroads on making payments for their real estate and their motor vehicle excise. They are now up to date on their real estate taxes. They're completely up to date, including the May payment, so we're in good shape with them. They still have tens of thousands of dollars, however, in the motor vehicle excise, so they're going to have to start chipping away on that. But they've been making the payments every month towards their real estate. Now they can start making payments against the motor vehicle, so I'm recommending that the Board continue the hearing for another couple of months until, I don't know, I think August 1st. No, we're all, well, we've got, in August, we've got the 13th and the 27th, or July 23rd, two months with the July 23rd, the Board wanted to continue the hearing until then.
I'll move that. Steve, second.
Second.
All in favor?
July 23rd, is that what you said?
Yeah. So Davis would move to 7:45 on July 23rd.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have information about the New Officials Finance Form. That's on Thursday, June 6th in Worcester, from 8:30 to 3:30 at Holy Cross. There's a registration form if anybody's interested in going and such. It was supposed to be received by the 24th, but given our election cycle and such, and our meeting cycle, I hope is that somebody who's interested in going can get the registration.
Is there money in the budget to take the bus?
Yeah. Either under the selectmen, or we can do it under the employment and training budget. Yeah. So do you want us to get your.
Let's see if I can.
Okay.
To file the registration for the what?
This is for the New Officials, it's New Officials Form.
Okay.
But wait to hear from Gordon as to whether he wants to go, and then we'll get the registration. Solid waste recycling discussion, we had talked back during the spring with Susan and Steve about at some point later on this year, having a long-term, a discussion of the long-term programs. I didn't know whether the Board wanted to pick a date now. I know at some point, either probably the meeting on the 25th of June or July 9th, the Board will probably be doing its annual setting of the fee for the recycling bills. I don't know whether you want to do that.
Well, that would be an appropriate time to talk.
I think it would be a great time to talk to him about it all, but you need to notify him as to.
Yeah.
When they can come in.
Just a question on that. Does the Board of Health get a list of all the people that receive private haulings?
They don't get a list of the, they have a list of the firms doing private hauling, they don't have a list of the residents.
Is there a way to ask them if they have, from those firms, a number of people that receive?
They can ask. I know they get the tonnage. I don't know that they have the number of customers reach them.
Just think it would be, if we had that information when we're talking about how many people are using private haulers versus.
Well, we keep track of that too, right? Because of the exemptions?
Yeah, I kind of, yeah, because when, you know, recycling bills go out, what we'll do is we get an abatement form, because they have private haulers, and we get those up until like the deadline that they're due.
Well, I think the thing is, we're talking about different things. You've got solid waste and you've got recycling. On the solid waste, the estimate that we have from the Regional Recycling Coordinator is that probably about, based on how many pounds of refugees we're getting removed on our basis, he estimates about 1,600 to 1,800 households are participating in the household curbside trash pickup. For recycling, we only get, we get fewer than, still, right now, at most 100 abatement requests. So you're, and that includes the Mobile Park in Twin Lakes and Halifax Meadows, so we're still talking more than 95% of the town. Now, that doesn't mean they're all participating, but for whatever reason, they, that's the number that either pay or paid some pay. Only maybe 3% of the households, 3% to 4%, actually filed for the abatement.
And basically, when they file for the abatement, they have to show the fact that their haulers are doing recycling as well as doing the rest of the solid waste pickup.
But I can talk with Kathy and Peggy and see whether they can contact haulers and get approximate number of people that, you know, households that subscribe to their services. See, I've got, so damn true, so we've got them. So I'll check with Steve and with Susan, get a date for setting the recycling fee and probable date, same for having a longer-term discussion.
Yeah.
Cemetery deeds, there are two to sign. So everybody gets to sign those. COA Volunteer Appreciation Lunch, and that's Thursday, June 19th at noon in Middleborough, and the deadline to RSVP for that is June 7th. I have been like here, so if anybody's interested, they should contact the COA.
Is that the Boston Town?
Yeah, over in Middleborough.
It's a fun town.
Men change, In-Season Restaurant, which is Mon Ponce, and they're changing their DBA to Lakeside Villa. Pam is going to contact George Latini and get the proper state forms and such filled out, because it's not, I mean, as much as it's simple, there is a list of documents that need to be filed with the Board.
He didn't come in.
Okay.
So what he did was I gave him the information to go on to ABC, because he's only changing his DVA.
Right.
So he's going to get that information.
Go back to you, and then we'll get the forms to sign.
So he's just, he's changing the name. Is he just going to do social events up there?
I think that's going to be.
Not going to have a restaurant open anymore?
Yeah, I spoke to him briefly. He's going to do functions on that side of the building. He's going to keep the BR's Cafe now, he's calling it, open for breakfast and lunch, and he thinks maybe they may take some space for a pub kind of thing. But it's a work in progress.
Elementary school graduations, Wednesday, June 12th at 6:00 p.m. in the gym. The Board's invited to that. Plymouth County Advisory Board membership for fiscal '20. The Board annually has to appoint someone each of the communities in Plymouth County, send someone as a representative to the Advisory Board, so someone from the Board is appointed, and then all from by the Board, and then also there's an alternate. So the request from Plymouth County has come in, and it brought this to the Board.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Garen, who's been doing this for quite some time, unless he does not want to do it.
No, I think it's a good connection. I enjoy doing it. I've been doing it for 21 years now with him, and I think it's good, but the alternate, he can also attend the meetings whoever is the alternate, if you're interested. Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So who's the alternate, then?
I'll be the alternate.
We haven't nominated.
Okay, well.
Do you want it? Do you want to be the alternate? Did I nominate you to be the alternate?
Fine. I haven't gone once in four years, because Troy goes every time, but that's all.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
I got a good one from you.
For Fieldstone Farms Horse Shows, I've given you a draft prepared by Attorney Mayo of the updated consent agreement. He wrote some notes, which I put on the front. The Board's not, hasn't really had a chance unless they came in last week to take a look at this, so it wasn't my intent for the Board to discuss this tonight, but I will bring it back to the Board on the 11th. If anybody has any questions about it in the meantime.
I'd like to give Gordon an opportunity to bring himself up to date on it before we discuss it. It's only fair.
Yeah, but I mean, but even for the two of you.
Yeah, I haven't read it either.
But I mean, Gordon's starting at a different place than the two of you are about this.
Well, he's ahead of us.
Okay. He knows what he doesn't know.
Actually, he's fortunate.
Yeah. Well, you haven't, I had to go to those meetings.
How often is the agreement then changed?
Just once.
Right, so back in the 90s, I think it was, we had the first consent agreement, then we updated it two years ago, I believe.
Yeah, it was a long process.
It took almost a year to update, and then Mr. Clausen came in, it was three or four months ago, and wanted, again, changes to it. Really just comes down to the number of days of horse shows that he wants, the number of multi-day shows that he wants. And the Board wasn't totally enthused about it, because we had just done a new agreement. I mean, this was a dramatic number of changes in the agreement, because it had been 25, 25 years since the last one had been done. But the Board finally said, fine, we'll work with you on changing the number of horse show days and the number of multi-shows that you can have.
Keeping in mind, your butters are kind of silent on a lot of this.
Right. I mean, we did notify the butters, we had a public forum, we specifically invited them to it. Zip.
And if, in fact, it's agreed upon, it still has to go to the court to, from the correct, for them to agree to have a consent decree in '93, was that at a court system, so we can't make any radical changes unless the court agrees.
And our revision was agreed to by the court, now this.
Exactly. But Mr. Clausen also wants language in there, so that if, for instance, he wants, I think it's 35 show days instead of 30, and eight multi-day shows rather than seven. What he wants to be able to, as far as the language, is if the Board would approve it sometime in the future, if he came back and said, well, I want 40 days, for instance, that it won't be something that then still has to go back to the court again. So that's another language change that he wanted, along with the actual numbers, the ability to change those numbers with approval by the Board without having to go back another time to the court another time.
I'll let you read it before I lay into what my thoughts are. Those multi-day shows are inside the 35 days, it's not addition to.
Okay, so within the 35 days, is there a limit to how many multi-days can be?
Usually, it's no more than four or five days for one of his multi-day shows. I mean, I think it might be even six days in some cases.
But he had seven, now he wants eight.
Right.
Eight multi-day shows. But it's all inside.
Because back, back when he started out, he would have a few one-day shows, maybe a couple of two-day shows, and what I guess the industry has gone to is they want most of the week, so that people will go to show X for the week, and then Monday is, like in baseball a lot, Monday's the day off, and everybody moves to a new location in the circular, let's say, or something like that.
And he, his business has grown, he's gone international with a lot of the shows and stuff that he's doing, so.
Yeah, especially the big ones.
He's looking for more days within the 35 days, multiple shows. But give me an opportunity to read and catch up.
And we've got, Pam can show you, we've got a voluminous file of correspondence and previous iterations and everything else. So I'll bring this back to the Board on the 11th, and I'll tell Larry that, bring it to the Board. Okay, are we at the, where for next appointment, or have we already passed that?
We've cast it over there. And that's the revocation hearing on the Country Club.
Right, so where that sits is that there are some outstanding taxes. In fact, I think it's in tax title for a property on Fairway Drive that's owned by the Country Club. My recommendation is not for the Board to make any decision about revoking the licenses, but to continue the hearing for two weeks from now, re-notify the Country Club that they need to either get on a payment plan for paying these back taxes, or they can make full payment. The amount here for this property, I believe, is leased for one year, it's about $800 or so. So it's not a significant amount, but nevertheless, they do all the back taxes.
Did we send him a certified letter before? Did they respond to it?
Didn't get a response, so I'm going to give him one more opportunity, not send another certified letter, because we're just continuing the hearing.
What is the process when someone that has a license?
So what happens is that either for, generally, what happens if the license is coming up for renewal, in this case, what happened is the fuel storage license comes up on May 1st every year, along with a few of the other venues, so we'll ask the collectors, obviously, are all the taxes up to date? And it used to be, it was a full year, and then we changed that a few, I think, to last year to make it 30 days, so there's a, if they haven't, if not, if there's anything that's past 30 days due, we can revoke the license. But what we do is, we have to have a hearing, they have to be notified by certified mail. Is it the rain? I guess it is. And either they need to have paid their taxes, or they need to be on a payment plan with the Collector's Treasurers Office, that's SAS Factory to Pamaducci. So for instance, with Davis Automotive, we've been running that revocation hearing now for probably more than a year, but what's that has meant is we periodically will check with her to see, are they making payments? Are they making, you know, we've got a payment plan in place, are they making those payments? Yes, they are, great. We don't, we just continue the hearing. If they haven't, we'll revoke the license. Now, there've been a couple of times we revoked the license, the class two, and said, fine, we're going to continue the hearing, because inevitably, what happens is, once we do revoke the license, they make the payments catch up, and we rescind the vote that we took to revoke the license.
And the biggest gist is that we're not trying to put anybody out of business, and we understand that things are difficult, but at the same time, fair is fair.
So in this case, you know, we'll continue the hearing for two weeks if the Board wants to. I'll notify Country Club again, say, look, either get a payment plan in, you know, in essence, pay attention, although this is real, either make the payments or make, get a payment plan, because your licenses, which were in this case, both be their cash storage, flammable storage permit, but also their conventional license, and also their alcohol license, and through the hope that they'll make the payments or get on a payment plan.
What's the Board?
I'll move. We wait until, what was the date you picked?
I'll put it on, on June 11th for 8:00 p.m.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Fieldstone Revocation. Davis, we've done public records requests. We had received one from Sound Solar Systems for documents for the solar panels at Walmart and the solar field along Ponce Street. We do have some documents on file. I'll contact the requestor to ask for more specific information, because it's not clear whether the person wants paper or electronic. They want sets of plans, permits, certificate of completion. So we're working with the building office, because I'm checking with them to see whether we can do everything in-house, or we're going to have to go to, we printed today over in Kingston. They want the large 24 by 30s, you know, we charge them appropriately for the copies and so on.
Do we know Sound Solar Systems?
No, they're down in Old Greenwich, Connecticut.
Okay, it's not anybody we've worked with.
No, and they're, for whatever reason, they have an interest, I'm not sure why. I mean, the one over at Walmart is simply their roof panels.
Yeah, I suspect hardly anybody even knows they're there.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the one on Ponce, the front line is obvious, but I think, but that, and given that the other ones are still not active, in the sense that we haven't, they haven't been constructed, maybe, that that's the only one that they're asking for. If we, if the one over on Rigger Street was completed, or if the one at Nazarell's property on Summit Street was, had ever been built, they'd probably be asking for those too, but not.
So are these the only two projects that are actually completed at?
Well, no, the Walmart. Well, no, the Walmart one isn't any different than a house.
Yeah, it's a rooftop palace. I mean, it's.
Yeah, the only field one is the one on Ponson Street.
That's the only one.
We've, yeah.
Franklin Street's working, but that isn't done yet. I mean, working, I mean, they're working on it, but it's in the works.
So there's Franklin Street where the, where the proposed chapter 40B had been.
Right.
Then there's River Street where they've been doing some earth removal, not earth removal, earth moving to get.
They've done a pretty good, a good fence up.
Yeah, we received information from them as to what they're doing and their schedule and what's going on and that.
No, because we don't have a pilot.
Yeah, we're still working on a pilot.
Franklin Street, we've got the pilot. First, we don't have the pilot, we passed over that at town meeting. And I expect we'll bring that back at some point in the future when we get it done.
Okay, it's eight o'clock. There was another one.
Well, there was, there was a Nazarell property over in Summit Street. But that, I mean, we did a pilot and everything, but they never built it. It's been doing, I don't know, three or four years at least.
At least that. Well, we have an eight o'clock appointment, I don't mean to cut you off, we have an eight o'clock appointment at this time with Mr. Colcos. Appointment to Historical Society. The gentleman here?
Send him an email. We confirmed it.
Okay, well, I guess we'll try and make a new appointment.
Yeah, we'll come back to the next meeting.
Yeah. If he comes in a little bit later, we'll see him, and if not.
So the sales will be it too.
I don't know, why don't we tentatively put him in for eight, if, why don't we tentatively put him in, if he comes in tonight, then that's great, if not, let's try for eight 15 on the 11th.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
No, but if Gordon had.
He had a question.
So the Nazarell one, there was a pilot agreed to, but no construction.
No construction.
Are there any others that were?
No.
That I'm aware of.
No, Franklin Street, it's, we've got the pilot.
Yeah.
I don't know.
They're working down there.
Okay, so that's under construction with a pilot. River Street, it's, they're doing what they can do, they, I believe they pulled, I think part of the negotiations is the permit.
Yeah, they, they pulled the permit, paid the huge fee.
Yeah.
Pending the negotiations with the pilot agreement.
And they've done earth moving work to get the site prepped.
They're doing site prep, they've got fence up, National Grid's putting poles up, I noticed again today. So they're running their three-phase down there, which is the thing that they need the most, so it's moving along.
Town meeting gave authorization to negotiate the pilot, but we, when we went back a couple of weeks ago, we didn't have a pilot in hand to bring to town meeting, so we passed over that article. At some future date, whether it's this fall or whenever, we'll bring a pilot, my hope is we'll have a pilot agreement to bring back. I mean, obviously the board's going to see this and everything, the assessors work on it primarily, then they bring it back to the board, because Larry, Attorney Mayo's working with them on that. We get a fee from each of the developers to pay for Larry's costs.
That's one of the sticky points of the pilot. And for those of you at home who don't understand what a pilot agreement is, it's payment in lieu of taxes. We negotiate a contract because it's a little sketchy out there as to what's personal property and how we can actually assess the, the solar fields. So the pilot agreement establishes what we're going to get for the 20 years that the agreement's enforced.
So can they build the project without a pilot?
Yes.
Yes.
They could. But then we, then they'd recharge you for property taxes.
Yeah, yeah, there'd be a horrendous fee for them.
So it's in their best interest?
To do a pilot agreement, yes.
And there's an interest for us too because part of the pilot agreement includes the setup for the decommissioning.
Right.
Because we can't, most of us except for Troy can't expect to be here in 20 years, so.
He takes his vitamins.
You said I'm going to disappear over the next year.
No, we're disappearing.
You're the only one that's going to still be here, is what he's saying.
So the idea is that we have a pilot.
In other words, you say, I got no life.
That's set up so that if they just walk, we'll have money available to get the decommissioning of the project.
By a dollar, yeah.
But, and that's part of the whole pilot.
Got you. Okay. Is there a way for you to condition the pilot so if it's still producing energy that they can continue, or does it have to be in 20 years to get it?
I guess they could do a new pilot if they want.
Yeah.
Efficiency of the system though decreases every single year. So it may, I guess, the 20 years generally, I guess, been seen as the norm place where.
Well, if it's still there, then they still face the problem, if they don't do another pilot agreement, then you still go after the person.
Still a profit taxes, property taxes.
It's still, again, going to probably be in their best interest.
Okay. I mean, I, I think, I mean, I don't know about the projects that went back in during the 70s and 80s, the really early solar fields. So I don't, and I don't know what happened with those, but I think the recent state, no, we had, nobody's hit 20 years. So no one has, you know, probably, a lot of it's going to depend on what electricity rates are like then. Do they, it doesn't, is it cost effective for them to replace the panels with new panels?
Yeah. Well, the state hasn't really made it clear though, on these pilot programs a whole bit, because each, each town's looking at something different.
Yeah, the state's, the state's working on it. There's a bill in the 2000s on bills that the legislature's going to take up this year. Maybe we'll see.
Because the western part of the state has a lot of pilot programs.
Only because I have personal knowledge of what goes on in our neighboring community. There's six now and there's eight on the desk waiting to be processed.
So what, you know, I don't know that anybody really knows what's going to be the situation in 20 years, but we're looking at sort of the minimal situation, assuming that it's done, it doesn't pay for itself anymore in 20 years, and we want everything removed at that point. That's why the bond's in place. I mean, I would say you're right, if for some reason somebody wanted to continue it in some fashion, we'd be agreeable to doing it, but nobody's reached that point yet.
The expectation is that the panels will be, if they don't replace them along the way.
They deteriorate.
They'll be deteriorated now. There's some commentary about they're coming up with a process to refurbish them and be able to resell them and everything, but yeah, I don't know.
But there's like, there's an infrastructure for the panels to be on, and then the panels themselves.
Right, right.
The racks.
There's mounting racks.
Racks or something.
Yeah, yeah.
407 South Street, Larry's still working with the potential, we're doing the minimal amount of work on this in that this is a property that town went through the complete foreclosure process. The Gamble family left the property, they now have a third party that is working with the Gamble property family to try and redeem the property, they're going to have to go to court to do that. We're basically leaving our, we're keeping our hands off of it in the sense of other than they'll have to make full payment of the back taxes, associate legal fees, even we're paying right now for rat eradication on the property, so we'll see how that plays out, but there's nothing new to report. All we know is that there's, the third party's working with the Gamble family, and we'll see if eventually they file the necessary court papers. Let's see, highway vacation carryover, let's see where we are here. This is for Dave, Dave Swanson and Donnie Cole. This is a condition of the union contract where each year they can carry over up to 40 hours, but they still need to have Steve Hayward as highway surveyor and then the Boris Selectman approve the vacation carryover to next year. Reason for those two.
And normally if the supervisor approves it, because he understands the schedule better than we do about how many people he needs to do as a performer for, we just don't have a problem with it, but unless something really unusual comes up.
And they can't accumulate more, it's not as if they're going to be building this up in the sense of that they can, they get the accrued vacation during the year and it gets deposited in their vacation account in July first. In addition to that, they can carry over previously accrued vacation, but only up to that 40 hours.
Which is the same as wage and personal.
Right.
So do you need a motion?
Yes.
I would move to approve the 40 hours.
Second. Carryover.
Carryover.
All in favor?
Alright.
And we have the rescheduling for spring splash over at the Lincoln Street Beach to June 9th, the three Kim. They, I think originally tried to do this early May and I think that was one of the days like today. Wasn't going to work out.
No centering anymore.
The chiefs are aware of this, so they've been notified and everything. Rufus, the dog, we had had a dog bite involving Rufus, two or three months ago now. The board held a hearing with the owner and with the dog owner, the owner of the dog that had been bit. The board had noted to have Rufus euthanized. Then that went to a clerk magistrate, as is the owner's right to do so. Clerk magistrate upheld the board's decision. Now it's going back to court for another appeal. We just got word of that today, which I think would have been the last day anyway, for the appeal process. So there'll be another hearing held, we'll have counsel there on June 7th. I've notified the police chief, the ACO, the animal inspector and Attorney Mayo, so we'll see how that goes.
And he still hasn't paid the license fee, the stuff on the dog?
I have no idea, I didn't go down to check.
That was after last week he had.
Oh, so that's, yeah, another invite, Plymouth Area Chamber of Commerce having the annual meeting in Plymouth on June 19th. There are RSVPs required by June 12th, so I have the card here, if anybody's interested.
Oh, it's not in Brooklyn this year?
Nope. Oh, this Plymouth Area Chamber.
Plymouth Area, not the Metro South.
Metro South, right.
We're starting the appointment season, most of the appointments will do on June 11th, but we have some early ones to get done. First is for the Board of Registers for the Democratic Representative, and that would be Derek M. Bennett to be reappointed to the board for a term to expire March 30th of 2022.
So move. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Then for Steve Hayward as cemetery superintendent and burial agent, that term would expire on May 16th, 2020.
So move. Second. All in favor?
And then Pam's given you, I think in each of your folders, right Pam, the list of appointments that are coming due for June 30th, 2019, or I think maybe for the finance committee. See, the finance are wagered first, so it's the middle of June. But well, the idea here is that if the board has any concerns about any of the possible reappointments, they should notify Pam and can hold those over. What happens then is if Pam doesn't hear anything on a particular person, Pam will contact everybody on that list, say, do you wish to be reappointed? And get an affirmative and bring that list back to the board on June 11th for the annual appointments.
Pam, is that in the blue folder? Yeah, because I don't see.
It's behind the blue.
Behind the blue? We need more colors.
Okay. Okay. I was going to say, Pam and I will check with the clerk's office and make sure they're up to date on their ethic certifications. What we do is we make, if they aren't, then we notify those people, say, you've got to get these up to date, and the board doesn't make appointments until those are up to date. The board may wish, if it wants to, with the ZBA and the Conservation Commission, check in to see if they've taken a specific training since their last reappointment. One of the things, we're going to put in the town's bylaws, there's a recommendation that employees, including the volunteer boards, take a certain amount of training every year. There's, for conservation, the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners holds workshops every year that members could attend. Same thing with the ZBA, they can attend the citizen planning, citizen planner, train collaborative workshops that are held in the fall. Also, there's an annual series of workshops over Holy Cross each year. And the board wants to, they can check the board to see what, you know, the boards and committees have done. So that's where that sits for the appointments. On another dog case, this was, is it Gia or Gia?
Gia.
Gia. This was a dog bite incident over at Twin Lakes. However, our understanding based on correspondence we have is that Gia has left the building per se, but, so there was not a necessity of holding a hearing tonight, but we are going to hold the hearing on June 11th so that the board can take official action dealing with Gia. If we don't, if the.
Do we know what, what, what area Gia has now resided in so we can contact the town officials?
Yeah, I believe it's going to New Hampshire up in Franconia.
Yep.
Well, there's a lot of.
Yes.
Yeah. It just, what happens is, in the contract, if you can, you know, if you want the dog, they want the dog back, and they did, there's paperwork right there from the breeder.
So the breeder has the dog back?
Yes. And they've contacted the local armed police department, they're aware of it.
Okay. That's a small concern, but I don't want to move our problem to somebody else and they have to deal with it.
Is that the typical process?
Well, a lot of times, in fact, the owner will get the dog out of town. Because it doesn't want the dog to be euthanized. And that way it avoids that situation. We, our reach only goes up to the town borders. If the dog came back in, we could, the board could take particular action, even up to getting a warrant to go on up to somebody's property to get the dog.
Okay.
But much of the time, the owner just preemptes all that, gets the dog out of town one way or the other. And sometimes the owner will euthanize a dog if the board orders euthanasia. I mean, we have, in probably the last three years, we've had one or two cases where the board, not including Rufus even, where the board's ordered euthanasia.
There's only five times since I've been on board that we've had to euthanize a dog.
Where it gets tricky is if the dog's under quarantine and somebody takes him out of town, then it gets a little dicey.
But again, it doesn't, our jurisdiction just goes to the board.
So when you, when you say under quarantine, is that by the selectmen or is that?
Through the animal inspector. Because if we, if we have a dog bite incident, then the dog that did the biting has to be under quarantine for 10 days, just as a rabies check.
And we, we never have dog hearings, we have people's hearings. Because if the people do what they're supposed to do with the animals, the animals wouldn't be put up.
We have an interesting.
Mr. Chan, that five euthanized dogs, does that include Rufus in your time here? So that would be six.
Well, put it this way, five that we voted to euthanize, doesn't necessarily, like I said, they disappeared sometime out of town and they go to places, stuff. So that can remember.
And Troy's quite, you've run an 815 for your fate for a live entertainment permit.
Yeah, I've never seen a dead entertainment before.
Never seen it.
How you doing tonight?
Good tonight. My first town meeting like this was very interesting, just the other little bit that I got to hear.
Well, so go ahead and tell them what you're playing on.
I plan on having a 50th birthday party on July 20th. I brought one folder, maybe just pass it around.
Yeah.
It's a music list, the layout of my property, the application, if you can kind of see that Google now.
Where are you located?
I'm at 37 Franklin Street, it's a bad curve kind of, it almost connects to Hayward.
Oh, I know.
Yes. So I want, July 20th, I'd like to have a 50th birthday party, even though my birthday was in January. Not many times to be outside in January, but this past month was pretty mild, I could have maybe. I want to have a police detail there from 12 to 8. The band will be there from 2 to 6. While they're playing, it's four hours for $500, but between the break, they take a 15-minute break each hour, I'm figuring they'll be there five hours till 7.
So let's specify to the listening audience, that's from 12 noon to?
No, they'll play at 2, and probably be done by 7.
Okay, because.
No encore, I don't want. No one, Cor.
12, 12 to 8, it could be till midnight.
No, 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 my, everybody's gone, I'm gonna take on, I have to work.
He thought the party started at midnight.
Oh, no. 12 in the afternoon.
Okay, I, I just wanna make it clear, I took, I already had it in my head.
Cause I mean, if you're having a birthday, you might as well celebrate all 24 hours.
Cause you're already late. Have you spoken with your neighbors?
Yes. Uh, no, no, they're all live.
Okay.
Well, I haven't spoken to anybody, cause I'm sitting on invites to everybody.
Yeah.
Um, down back, uh, and to, if you're fixing my house, down back into the right of me, I'll be using part of their shoulder into the two driveways that, that they're, that go down there to their properties.
Okay.
For like five or six cars. But again, it's July 20th. I plan to have a police detail from 12 to 8. The band starts at 2, they will be gone, they'll be done playing at 7. I anticipate people to be off my property by 8, friends, family. Um, I will have most of the cars off the street. There'll be three or four cars over on the little pie wedge where Hayward begins, but I want that curve clear. I want the officer to let the cars flow. I don't want anybody in the street in front of my house. Um, he will probably park, I would assume, on the front lawn and use his hands and whatever. Um, he's there for parking and to let people come and go safely.
That's smart.
Yes. Um, I'll have the caterer. I already contacted Kathy at the board of health. The caterers I'm having probably three different places. One is Johnny Macaroni's here in town, um, cater at Italian Kitchen, and I don't know who the third might be. Um, they will be contacted, I think she said 72 hours before or after, but I'll have them call before. I said, if, you know, they're probably gonna be busy places with graduations and stuff, so if they can't get through, hopefully that they don't go back and forth.
You gonna have any type of alcohol beverages?
I thought you'd ask that. It's bring your own booze. I am not offering any of my end to them. Um, bring your own chair. Um, one thing is if, if there is rain in the forecast, I am canceling it totally. I'm not going, going with the whole tent thing and I will pay the officer. I believe I'm accountable for two hours of pay. They'll know, uh, it'll be canceled seven days ahead of time because usually the local forecast is, uh, seven days to the weekend if I, if I can get it correctly.
So who else is gonna be in charge other than yourself?
Uh, my wife does not drink. I will be there, I don't be drinking.
Okay.
She does not drink. Um, other than the officer there who can observe everything, um, having, um, just everybody park on my front lawn pretty much, other than, uh, three or four cars, which will be off the street way away, if you know that little location. Um, I think that's about, the band will be up on the step to kill between my house and one neighbor. Um, yeah, well, it's pretty dry up there. I call it the upper level. I've made it a nice area, my son and I play lacrosse there, it's, it reminded me of this table. Um, so it'll be the band, smoking area and everybody down below listening on and corn hole and.
What's it like to be 50?
Uh, I mean, UPS drive for 27 years, I, I like it. I'm in great health and I, I'm in great shape, I, I like it. I just got back from camping over the weekends, speaking of horses, I filled stone down in Miles Standish. We made two trips to like, we would go down with our camper and bring the horses down and spent the weekend.
Nice.
My wife and I are, uh, we're very active, so, um, what's it like to be 50, it feels great. I feel like I'm 30.
Do it while you can.
Well, happy belated birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I would like to make just one thing clear is the party will be over by 8. I want everybody gone. I planned my own graduation party, I planned my own bachelor party, I'm planning my 50th and they will be gone. I, I don't wanna upset any neighbors whether they come or they're invited or not.
Yeah.
And I've always been that way. Um, if you approve this permit, I appreciate it. Um, as soon as you approve it, I can start the process of ordering the food.
Is there the other? It's at the right time of day.
Yes.
Any other questions the board members have? No, I think. Are you invited to make a motion? I'm fine. Am I invited? That's all I want.
Well, I'd like to say please drive by, talk to the officer, he's entitled to have a meal once the band starts, cause he doesn't have to be out front. So anybody else wants to come by, you're more than welcome, he'll tell you where to park. Oh, and by the way, um, the, the guest list, it's, uh, 56 people, no more. Uh, forecounting the band and my two sons, I don't know if they're bringing their girlfriends, but they will pick their girlfriends up for, for two less cars. Uh, I wanna have less, I wanna have at least as much traffic as possible.
I think you will thought of.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, again, I plan my own parties and, uh, I wanna be considered by neighbors, you know, and I don't want to go into the night at all and I don't want, because everybody, you know, it's Saturday to Sunday, people have plans on Sunday and I don't wanna bother them, so.
Sounds like you've done some great planning.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? I'm good. I'll move second approval. Any further discussion?
No, thank you. Other than congratulations.
Thanks very much. All in favor? All right, all right. Thank you.
I will get your, uh, permit up to your, I can give you a ring.
Just give me a ring. Thank you, um, I'm always available, you know, if you got my number, I'm showing it to you. Um, nothing else is gonna change, everything other than ordering the food. Uh, the quarter party will be way in the backyard. Uh, I think that's it.
Is that the large oak tree or is it?
I was a boy scout, I almost made it to Eagle, so it's not gonna get there.
There you go.
Well, thank you.
You're good. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And if anything else changes, I forget the weather, I'll let you know ahead of time. Thank you.
So Pam, you had put two things on here. One is the car wash. I mean, we haven't been, done something like this for a while, so we're just trying to cover our bases to make sure. And for some reason, the board felt it needed to issue the permit for the car wash. Generally it goes through the water department. Yeah, it's been a while.
The water pump, the water pump was fired, it, uh, police and fire both signed off on it. It's that salon.
Wait a minute, you can wash the cars, but I can't water my grass?
Oh, my God.
So what date is it?
It's going to be.
Who's having the car wash?
It's, um, Kelly McAndrew's Salon Serenity. It's a fundraiser for type 1 diabetes. She's, it's right across the street from the.
We're at Lake Church.
Yeah, she usually does it.
She does a cancer thing too.
Yeah, but now she got it on cause her son has diabetes, so she's, um, it's going to be June 23rd.
What's the location?
At the salon.
Just like, yeah, right out front.
Come out, that's what you're gonna, she's not, you know, one, one way in, one way out.
What was that, June 23rd?
Yep. Uh, 10 to June. That's behind the blue doors.
So again, we, it's been a while since we've done this, but she came in because she wanted to make sure that the board was in the loop and everything. I guess preferred getting a permit from the board so if the board would approve it.
Sure. So move. Second. All in favor? Give your permit.
And the other subject is wage and personnel liaison, um, with Kim having retired from the board. Kim was the board's representative for the wage and personnel board, as long as we don't have the surveillance per se on there. Um, the board should be aware, Melinda Tarsi has indicated she will no longer be able to serve on wage and personnel because of scheduling conflicts, both her professional work and also she, I guess is now, she mentioned the association town finance committee, so I'm not sure if she's joining the executive committee or whatever, but she said she's not gonna be able to, um, attend wage and personnel meetings. So she's already notified, wait, um, finance committee of that, they'll have, when they meet later this month, whether it's this coming Monday or some other Monday, they'll have to choose a representative to serve, but the board also will need to choose someone to serve.
Well, speaking for myself, I served for a while and hated it, so, um, I'm wondering if Mr. Andrews might be interested in serving on there, cause I'd be happy to nominate it.
And in terms of.
Especially with your finance.
Yeah, and granted, in terms of the meeting schedule, that will be up to you and whoever's coming in from finance. The last time.
Cause there is.
They were doing it first and third Thursdays for the most part, but it's not, there's no requirement. I mean, the board, they've met sometimes on Wednesdays, they've met on the other Tuesdays, I mean, when the selectmen aren't meeting, they've met on first and third Tuesdays. So it's up to you, if you're the one chosen, whoever goes from the board and whoever comes from the finance committee, work out some sort of agreement.
And just, just so you know, when I first started serving the town, that was where I was on the wage and personnel board. It was just me and Pam.
And the other thing is that, um, we have, I don't know, probably like a half dozen applications for wage and personnel secretary because Sue Vought had resigned. She said she'll serve at least for a little while until you all get somebody else on board, but she is on her way out. Um, and you know, there are resumes sitting in the box, like, we're gonna ask Pam to get them tomorrow and we'll make copies for whoever's from the selectmen and we'll make a copy for whoever's coming from finance, so at least, because we wanna move the process along and, you know, even set up appointments for your, whatever meeting you all are going to meet, then we can bring in these candidates, whoever you want to meet with you and go on from there.
You can always refuse and then we make choice.
Oh, I don't think so.
I'm kidding.
I'm not much of a choice, I guess, but, um.
It's an interesting experience.
Yeah, it's an interesting experience, yeah. There are many interesting experiences in life.
I was chair of finance committee, not to take that job past us. Has anybody from the public filled out any forms for either finance or wage?
I don't think I've had anything.
I don't look at the town bank forms, I don't think we have to make wage and personnel in the public. I don't want.
I mean, we can advertise again, obviously.
Can we put it on the big sign? Ask for volunteers?
Sure, yeah.
Cause it is the biggest expense of the town, is the employees, so.
Yeah, absolutely. The thing is that even with one person, we still need members from the selectman and the wage personnel. It's only when we get to two that we drop that requirement. So, but we can at least start working on it.
Okay with me now?
Not really, but I will.
So I'll nominate Mr. Andrews for be our liaison to the wage and personnel.
Tend to be, I'll second that.
You can always.
You can always get yours.
Hopefully we will get some other people to come on, you know what I mean? Then.
May I make a suggestion? Why don't you think on it for a while, we can do it, cause we don't wanna get overwhelmed.
Uh, I'm, I'm just concerned about the amount of time and the school committee commitment and I would ask to be the liaison to the school committees for the selectmen.
That would make sense.
Yeah. Well, we don't have to have a liaison.
No. But generally we've had somebody go to at least some of the meetings.